Rule call.
Mary Bud, Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters.
Here.
All the members present. If Alyssa Spinner would come forward. Whereas to really excel in any one subject, a young person must demonstrate in addition to a great deal of natural ability, an outstanding spirit of knowledge, dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and whereas Alyssa Spinner became the 2018 USTA National Champlain in tumbling by placing first in her age group of the USTA National Championships in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and now therefore I Bruce Barry, Mayor of the City of Tattletail, will do hereby claim August 20, 2018 as Alyssa Spinner Bay. I'm just voting in for the decision. Motion by Alderman Dorchenez, second by Alderman Jones. Rule call.
Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Bud.
Yes. Motion carries eight to zero. Minutes of the regular meeting held August 6, 2018. Minutes of the Water Environmental Committee meeting held August 9, 2018. Minutes of the Lake and Airport Committee meeting held August 9, 2018. Minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held August 16, 2018. Minutes of the Ordinance Committee meeting held August 16, 2018. Motion to approve all these?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Aldis. Rule call.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of corrections you might want to refer to on the Finance Committee meeting under Amarin Utility Agreement. Fourth line, it says Amarin is offering less reimbursement than we currently receive. I think that should be changed to may be. The numbers that city had that evening were for 14 months, not 12, so we don't really know if they're off or not. So I would suggest just say may be, instead of is. And then on your Ordinance Committee, it refers to Section 922, it should be Section 9-1-1. That's on your first page of the amended City Code.
Motion by Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Aldis. Rule call.
Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Mary Bud.
Motion carries eight to zero. I'm going to move up the Plan and Zoning Commission recommendations, so Chairman Hauser, go forward on the Atterbury Estates.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Board of Alderman. Planning and zoning commission met this evening for the purpose of considering the location in sketch map at a preliminary plan of the Atterbury Estates proposed subdivision, and everything seemed to be in order with a recommendation from the city engineer, Joe Green, and the planning and zoning commission board voted unanimously to recommend approval of those plans to you.
Make the motion to accept the planning and zoning recommendations.
Motion by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Walters. Discussion, comment, Alderman Walters.
I want to wish the Atterburys and all involved the best of luck in subdivision.
Thank you.
Rule call.
Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Larry Bud, Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Mayor. There was nothing else brought before our committee, so we adjut.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Tattletail, 17 ICOM Radio. Motion by Alderman Dorchenez, second by Alderman Voda. Discussion, comments, and rule call.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Did the mayor vote?
The mayor votes yes. Motion carries nine to zero. An ordinance submitting Section 5-7-2 of the Tattletail City Code, Halloween Trick-or-Treat Now. Motion by Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Jones. Comments or questions? Rule call.
Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Larry Bud, Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti.
Motion carries eight to zero. An ordinance adding subparagraph J in Section 3-2-4 of the Tattletail City Code, municipality utility tax division.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Bud. Questions or comments? Rule call.
Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Larry Bud, Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti.
Motion carries eight to zero. An ordinance submitting subparagraph PB of Section 5-1-3-1 of the Tattletail City Code, police sergeant eligibility. Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Voda. Questions, comments? Rule call.
Earl Walters, Larry Bud, Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda.
Motion carries eight to zero. An order submitting subparagraph A of Section 5-1-3-2 of the Tattletail City Code, police investigator detective special assignment. Motion by Alderman Aldis, second by Alderman Voda.
Comment? Yes, on, in the third line down of the, under A, after the, where it says January 1, 2018, thereafter, there shall be at least one police investigator detective who shall be appointed by special assignment from time to time by a majority of the Alderman. Rather than using the word shall, I believe that we should probably put the word may. If we put shall, it means that we're obligated to do that, and if for some reason we enter some financial hardship or something like that, shall means that we will do it. If we put may there, it does not obligate us, and I believe legally we can do that. Can we, Mr. Williams?
You can, you can. I would suggest saying may one or more. Police investigator detective. Otherwise it won't be, otherwise it would say may be at least one. So you want to say may be one or more?
Yeah.
Don't you want?
Yeah.
What's the motion? Alderman Aldis.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll keep it at least one.
Second, we have a motion by Alderman Voda. Rule call.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Mary Bud, Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Just so, just clarification here, I think we'll go back to at least one.
Okay.
Otherwise it could be read that you're going to have more than one, that you're going to get into an issue like that.
Yeah. But the shall.
Shall go away as they may, it's discretionary with the council.
Yeah.
An order submitting paragraph A and adding subparagraph H of Section 9-1-1 of the Tattletail City Code, building permits in both docks, both doors and accessory counters, canopies, or buildings on or adjacent to Lake Tattletail.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Manzetti.
Mayor votes on this order.
All right. Discussion or comment? Rule call.
Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Larry Bud, Mayor Barry.
Yes, motion carries nine to zero. A resolution authorizing execution of engineering services agreement. An ordinance to propose the approval of a business development district redevelopment plan and establish date for public hearings for the Tattletail Business Development District Number One. Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Walters. Comments or questions?
We've discussed it in pretty good detail at committee level, and I just want to remind everybody that this will also, if this moves forward and we do go forward with this development, this development district, that it will include the home-based businesses also, so I want to make sure that everybody is aware of that as we move forward with this. Thank you.
Rule call.
Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones, Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Larry Bud, Sean Burdell, Mayor Barry.
Yes, motion carries nine to zero. Okay, as I was saying, a resolution authorizing execution of engineering services agreement for an engineering.
I assume the city clerk has the agreement that will be attached to the resolution?
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor.
I'm sure she has.
Motion for that resolution. Motion by Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Aldis. Rule call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Larry Bud, Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez.
Motion carries eight to zero. A resolution waiving competition for architectural engineering and land surveying services for certain city projects. Motion by Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Dorchenez. Questions or comments? Alderman Jones.
Um, yes, was, this was discussed at street school. I take it?
Yes, sometime back.
Yeah. Was it, I mean, did we do this for any certain projects already, or?
This is a resolution, if I may speak on that issue, that was discussed before, the question raised by your city engineer. Do the state, all my state statutes permits this council to adopt the resolution as it's stated verbatim in here, that you need not go through the Local Governmental Professional Services Selection Act for those types of projects that are the architectural engineering services or land surveying contracts or agreements are less than 25,000.
Okay.
It just puts you in compliance.
Well, I remember you talking, you said that there was a statute, I just want to make sure.
That's what the statute's all about.
Okay, thank you very much.
Going to get you, it's going to get you legal.
Okay. Rule call.
I'm sorry, yes. Lee Manzetti, Jim Hollis, Martin Voda, Earl Walters, Larry Bud, Sean Burdell, Ernie Dorchenez, Bruce Jones.
Motion carries eight to zero. A resolution approving the execution of a global relations settlement agreement, Zack Wells litigation.
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask that you defer any action on that this evening. I put that on the agenda with the hopes that we would have had the two survey flats in question before you, so you'd had time to consider it and consider your approval of it. We just got them in this afternoon. I emailed everybody, and we probably haven't had a chance to really look at it. I have not yet got final word from Chicago Title, whether they're from their attorney, whether they want to be signatory to this agreement or by a separate agreement committing themselves to pay the 10,000. So I'm waiting to hear from that. And then also, we have a request by Mr. Wells that he understands if this, when this goes through, that he will be acquiring the property in its as-is condition, but he would like to have the opportunity to do an inspection inside and going to see what as-is amounts to. So what as-is is, there you go. So I don't think we, we want him to do that, but he, the agreement, if, when it's signed, means that whatever it is, it is what it is. We're making no warranties about it. So I'm going to have to defer to, hopefully by next council meeting it'll be.
So we'll go see up until the next council?
I would suggest it, yes. Because I have, I saw the flats come in, and I see the drawings, and I'm not sure, you guys have to decide if that's what you had in mind as to what was going to be to pay. Yes, sir. Mr. Williams?
If he wants to see the property, you can see what the as-is is. I mean, he went through an awful lot of litigation here, a lot of time and effort and money to get a piece of ground that is an opportunity that he can say, you know what, the as-is is not what I want now.
No, no, I think the inspection would come after he signs the contract.
Okay.
He's obligated. And that makes sense.
Yes, that makes sense.
That's what, that's what I envisioned, so. You put your name on the dotted line, we have an agreement, and then you're permitted to walk through if you want.
Alderman Aldis.
Just to, he has inspected that property previously, whether that was in there with him or not.
I'm going by what his attorney had told me, and I have not talked to, obviously I can't talk to Mr. Wells personally.
Yeah, him and thought about, were in there inspecting.
Maybe I'll pass that along to Mr. Aldis, so. Remind him that they've already been as-is inspection.
Okay, so that's table. Motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to amend 3-3-5 of the Tattletail City Code to create a Class M liquor license for convenience stores that also permits video gaming. Motion?
So moved.
By Alderman Dorchenez.
Second.
Second Alderman Walters. Comments or questions? Alderman Jones.
We, we did discuss this quite lengthy at our committee meeting last week. I just want to say, if we're going to open this up, and there were comments about the money that could be made for the city and how it could help us, you know, the other owners were there that have video gaming, were there talking about expanding video gaming in the past, and they said that they didn't really want to do that. One of those license holders has another license now, they're going to open another establishment, so they're expanding gaming in light of what they already have. But I just have to ask the question, when is enough enough? And Alderman Dorchenez said that he was wrong when he said that there were only so many discretionary dollars to be wagered, and he said, apparently I was wrong. And he was, he was very big to, of him to say that, because it doesn't usually end when you're wrong. But.
I think it's because I've never been wrong.
Okay, so, I, you know, I just have to ask the question, when is enough enough? The people are tired of seeing the banners, the lights, and all that other stuff, and I was talking with Alderman Burdell that we may be able to, if, depending on what the rules are for home rule, that we may be able to get rid of some of those banners and stuff like that. So we'll be looking into that, so that it's not.
That's a different issue.
It's not, it's, it's a different issue, but it's something that we need, we need to look at anyway. So I would just urge my fellow council members, you know, ask, before you vote, ask yourself, when is enough enough? Thank you.
Any other comments or?
When video gaming first came to Tattletail, I've been proposing, and this is the only thing that I can think of on the 10 years I've been on council, but I wish I had a few over on, because I'd have voted no, if I, what I know now, I'd have voted no then. And I think, I think the money makes this a little bit off course, I, the money's so important anymore that we'll vote yes on this by then. Just going to make the dollars for the City of Tattletail, we're going to vote yes on it. And we've got two big arguments coming up probably in the next, probably four to five years, you know, the sports betting and marijuana's going to end up in, in, at some point, and they produce a lot more cash than video gaming does. So if we can't get past the money on this issue and can't get it settled on how much is enough, I doubt we're going to get past that either. So I'm going to vote no on it, I don't think that we need to expand it anymore, I think there's plenty of it in town, and the way that we're expanding it, at the rate we're expanding it, we might as well just open up to all video gaming goes along with liquor licenses, regardless of where it's at, because that's pretty much the way it's headed from the top of the main.
Sir?
State name. Hello, I'm Chuck Snyder, I'm the commander of the Tattletail VFW here. I'm here to kind of somewhat protest the expanded gaming. As you probably know, back when this law came into effect, there was only like four different establishments that were allowed to have it. You had to sell for on the premises, for consumption alcohol, you could be a license truck stop if you sold 10,000 gallons of diesel fuel, or you could be a fraternal organization or a veterans organization, which is what we're here for. I'm not, I'm not telling you your business, but I would point out that, that the expansion of the gaming machines all over, not only Tattletail, but the country in general, has taken away a lot of the revenue from the smaller organizations that do charitable work, and I would hope that, you know, you wouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater when we have to survive to, to take care of veterans, to, like the Moose Club does, children's hospital plans and fundraising for that. We think it'd be detrimental if you continue to do that. Like I say, I think we mentioned that the liquor license is tied to the gaming, and you guys do control all of that, and I think prerequisites, you have to be able to serve, not just sell.
For.
For, for serving. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Yes, sir. State name.
Jake Meyer. I know what, it was a rhetorical question when he said, when is enough enough, but I'm going to attempt to answer it, or at least my opinion of the answer. When the free market dictates that no more will succeed, I came last week and I passed out a pamphlet showing that when we came into a town and didn't previous have an inconvenience stores, how it did go up. So it's not going to necess, it's not going to take away from the other businesses. We will make vast improvements to our store, the Mach 1, we're going to do a major remodel if we get this opportunity. That's basically it, that, that's my opinion of when is enough enough, that we don't know that it is yet, and I don't think it'll cannibalize it yet.
I, I think at committee meeting the other night, we went through most of these, almost everything that's brought up, I just want to say, and years ago, when it was so-called, before it was legal by the state, I've heard as many numbers as 200 gambling machines in Tattletail. I don't have any idea if that's a correct number or not, I know they were available. And as far as the, the clubs have gone, the Moose and VFW, American Legion, and also the Elks, we did not raise your licensing fee last year sort to help you out. We, we do look at it as a city, as a source of revenue. We're probably going to get between 225 and 240,000 dollars that we would dream of not getting. And I noticed that the VFW's share last month in June, was the last month we had, was 470 dollars, which is not very much. I admit that. I agree. But most of the hours we hear are open, it's not maybe one of the hours people are playing the games. I would say most of the gaming is during the morning and afternoon, and as the one person said at the meeting the other night, his core audience is 35 to 55-year-old women. I know some of the VFW riders, I mean, the women there, and so, and my other point is, back when this became legal, I was not mayor, they had problems with expanding, I think you're right, as the clubs and so-called taverns were the only ones that allowed to have it. But since then, they've opened it up to everyone, just about, and so I have no qualm with, with opening it up more and let the free market decide it. The city does receive quite extensive revenue, and it's something that, as a city, we hardly can do without. Our revenues keep dropping according to the treasure, and I think this is something that we need to look into. So that's why.
Could I just make one more? I did print off, my wife did, the, the state regulations on it, and nowhere it says anywhere that you can have these unless you're actually serving, pouring alcohol. And as far as what you're saying is true about the dwindling revenues for our mutual clubs, problem is, we pay to be charitable organizations, and so there's no incentive for somebody to pay to come to our place when they can just walk into a convenience store and throw money in it. So it does in fact affect us in the long run.
Correct. We're not going to discuss this all night, because we could have discussed it at committee, but the gentleman in the back?
I want to say I represent the fraternal work of the Eagles, and every fraternity, every legion, VFW, they all support the community. Community programs, a lot of the money that does come from machines goes back into the community. The money that the city receives, however, may go back into the city in some form, but different organizations, they raise money for back to school, for low income, you know, we, we, we don't like to digress, several different points, there's always, you know, unforeseen benefits, you know, this money supports a lot of benefits. You don't get that.
Thank you. I think everybody's been discussing this, so, I think, so. We have a motion on the floor, so rule call.
Jim Hollis.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
No.
Ernie Dorchenez.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
No.
Lee Manzetti.
No.
The vote is four to four, the mayor votes yes, the motion carries five to four.
Mr. Ramon, since you now have the direction to prepare that ordinance, that we'll come back to the next ordinance committee meeting.
Yes, sir.
For further review. I am, I'll be in contact with you because I'm going to be talking about the licensing fees for these, and, and I will have a discussion with the mayor on what that could be, I don't want to just say what it is, because I do want to have a good heart-to-heart with the mayor about this. So we'll have that ready for the next committee meeting.
Okay.
And that, that was moved.
September 19th, I believe.
Yeah, I think it was the 19th.
It was in the email.
It would be that Wednesday night. Thank you very much.
Will you be available that night?
Yeah.
I thought. You live in, I can still go there. Chicago, you moved Thursday, this is Wednesday night.
I'll be in Chicago.
You're already in Chicago, okay. Well, we'll have a good enough discussion, I don't think that we'll have to have you there that night.
I'll leave, I can leave a blank, whatever you want, you put in the dollars.
Okay.
You already have a higher dollar amount, you know that.
Yeah, there's going to be a higher dollar.
I mean, there's already one now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
My session starts at 8 o'clock that Thursday morning, so we don't have late places tonight.
City Attorney update.
Wait, one more thing, real quick on that. I would encourage that we don't set that fee behind closed doors, that we set that at committee level.
Oh, we will.
With a suggestion maybe from the mayor, the chairman of the city attorney.
Okay. We good?
Yeah.
Jeff, okay. Quick city attorney updates, I've already talked about the Wells lawsuit. You saw the email I forwarded to you, that the attorney for Amarin is actually gone this week, so I'll probably get back to him next week. And then I also sent you an email on the status of the Andre versus Sterling in the City of Tattletail litigation. They received supplemental ECA records from the plaintiff, and from what I understand from the attorney that represents you on behalf of the insurance company, is that they're not changing their position at this time. They've got some more records they're going to review, and then if there's going to be a change, he'll get back to me, so there's no settlement on the works on that case right now.
Question for you?
Yes, sir.
How long has that been dragging out? It's been quite a while.
Probably months, but litigation sometimes goes two, three years. And it's not unusual for this timeframe that I see.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so. Well, on that, that's it for now.
Mayor oral update. Schools open, please be careful in the school zones, and please drive defensively. I want to thank to many people that have donated to the tough field for the high school is a great addition to our community. Work has begun on Walnut Street. We have approved the new business development district, and I am optimistic this is a step in the right direction. We have to promote growth in the northwest area of town, but we also have to remember our downtown area. Last month's sales tax and non-home roof rule tax both showed significant increases, but we must remember to watch our expenditures. Thank you very much. Okay. Water and environmental. Alderman Burdell.
Three motions came out of committee meeting, and the first one was, a motion authorized and direct mayor to sign pay request number 13, and block construction in the amount of 984,150 dollars for work on the new water treatment plant, and forward a request to IEP A low interest loan program for disbursements and approved payment of same pension receipt of disbursement from the. program for disbursements and approved payment of same penny receipt of disbursement from the I E P A. This condition upon a receipt of assigned mechanic clean waiver in this amount and recommendation by the project engineer at the court that has been performed satisfactorily. Make that one more.
Motion for Oliver Burdo?
Second.
Second, Oliver Bud, roll call.
Martin Bouda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness? Bruce Jones? Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Hollis?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Second motion was to recommend to the city council to pay Benton Associates in the amount of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for work performed related to the construction of a new water treatment plant on June twenty-fourth of two thousand and eighteen through July twenty-first of two thousand and eighteen. I'll make that one more.
Motion for Oliver Burdo?
Second.
Second, Oliver Bud, roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Hollis? Martin Bouda?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Uh, third motion was to recommend to the city council to pay Clark Deets in the amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars for work performed related to construction of a new water treatment plant from June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen to, through July twenty-seventh of two thousand and eighteen. I'll make that one more.
Motion for Oliver Burdo? Second.
Second.
Oliver Walters? Roll call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness? Bruce Jones? Lee Landzati? Jim Hollis?
Yes.
Martin Bouda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Lake and Airport, Oliver Mizadi.
Four motions came out of the committee. First motion is to recommend to the city council to proceed with obtaining internet phone services, the C T I, with the city providing the labor and C T I getting the fiber optic drop cables across sunset at a cost not to exceed seven hundred dollars. Make that motion.
Motion for Oliver Mizadi?
Second.
Second, Oliver Bud, roll call.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness? Bruce Jones? Lee Landzati? Jim Hollis? Martin Bouda?
Yes.
Earl Walters? Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Motion to recommend to the city council to approve updating the dates on the campgrounds and lake lot leases to two thousand and nineteen. Make that a motion.
Motion for Oliver Mizadi?
Aye.
Second, Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to recommend to the city council to approve of Federal's Edg, Edgerton Management LLC to proceed with the spraying of the Awonco Blacktop at a cost of five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, with this cost being split equally between the lake, street, and water departments. Make that a motion.
And add to the motion, subject to execution, the city's form contract and submission of the records of certificates of assurance and any required performance of payment bonds, correct?
That has been taken care of.
All right, motion for Oliver Mizadi?
I'll comment.
Second.
Want to be sure that the public doesn't realize that we're not going to be spraying the blacktop.
No.
Second for Oliver Mizadi.
Second.
Second, Oliver Dorcheness, comment, Oliver Walters?
Yes, I want to be sure that the public doesn't think that we're spraying the blacktop.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Bernie Dorcheness? Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Hollis? Martin Bouda?
Yes.
Earl Walters? Larry Bud? Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
I'd just like to say something too, since Mr. Walters said something. If there was gray blacktop, I'll come vote no.
All right, Oliver Mizadi.
Motion to recommend to the city council to direct city attorney Romano to prepare an ordinance to sell the nineteen eighty-four Chevy one-ton duly four-wheel-drive truck by sealed bid. Make this a motion.
Motion for Oliver Mizadi? Second, Oliver Bud, roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati? Jim Hollis?
Yes.
Martin Bouda?
Yes.
Earl Walters? Larry Bud? Sean Burdo? Bernie Dorcheness?
Motion carries eight to zero. Finance committee.
Uh, first motion is moved. It's, yeah. Uh, so the other motion that I've got is recommend the city council through the treasurer's report is presented, make that one motion.
Motion for Oliver Bud, second, Oliver Burdo? Roll call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Hollis? Martin Bouda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Motion carries eight to zero. Ordnance meeting.
Thank you, we also have a moot motion on our first motion, so we had a motion recommend the city council change the date finance ordinance committee meeting to Wednesday, September nineteenth, twenty eighteen.
All right. Motion for Oliver Jones? Second by Oliver Bud, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Oliver Jones. Personnel committee.
Thank you, your honor, we did, personnel committee did meet prior to this evening's city council meeting with a motion coming out of there. It's recommended to the city council to allow superintendent Wiseman to bid and/or advertise the position of equipment operator two in the street department. I'd like to place that in Congress motion, Ron.
Second, motion for Oliver Bud, second, Oliver Walters, roll call.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Hollis?
Yes.
Martin Bouda?
Yes.
Earl Walters? Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Motion to approve and override payment of debt, Oliver Bud?
From what's coming?
Motion for Oliver Bud? Second by Oliver Burdo, comment?
Okay. Electric, eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four twenty. Fuel, twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine. Ace Big R Urban, two thousand, one thirty-seven, eighty-two. Office supplies, one thousand, six hundred and two hundred and sixty-three twenty. Garbage, three thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight, thirty-five. Computer tech, five thousand, twenty-seven, fifty. P S printing, two thousand, twenty-six. Larry Service Center, three thousand, six hundred and fifteen, eighty-eight. Paul Tulsa, five thousand, five hundred and seventy-six, oh four. Green and Bradford, three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three, twenty-five. Johnson Engineering, fifteen hundred. Bron Amber Emerson, sixteen hundred. P H Barotan, two thousand, four hundred and forty-three, sixty-two. Dana Limestone, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one, eighty-four. Logan Paul, one thousand, sixty-four, fifty. Phil Tollis, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fourteen, ninety. Meyer Austin and Monro for tip one, three thousand, four hundred and thirty-five. Tristan County Senior Center, five thousand. United Capital funding for temporary help, ten thousand, one twenty-four, sixty-four. Illinois Department of Employment, uh, Unemployment, seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. Illinois Department of Revenue, gas sales tax, two thousand, six hundred and sixty-one. Police and fire uniforms, one thousand, five hundred and thirty-six, thirty. Police Department, Nelson Systems, for three-year maintenance on kind of software, seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven, eight, sixty-six. Bone, leech, kennels, canine dog, eight thousand. Fire Department, global emergency, preventative maintenance on equipment, three thousand, five hundred and eighty, sixty-seven. Municipal enter, emergency, lifesaving awards, one thousand, sixty-six, ninety. Blake Clausen for training reimbursements, four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight. Street Department, hair and fertilizers, chemicals, two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine, sixty-six. Cardiograph systems, maintenance contracts, three thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven, twenty-five. Nat-type truck equipment for a belt for spreader, two thousand, three hundred and eighty. Truman Flat, seventy-one thousand, three forty-five. Water Department, Benton and Associates, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight, sixty-nine. Clark Deets, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five, fifty-five. Dead West Meter, two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two, ninety-seven. Chemicals, four thousand, six hundred and fifty-one, eighty-five. System X for water bill paper, one thousand, three hundred and forty-two, twenty. Morrison Electric, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six, twenty-one. Server Department, Stevens Concrete Products for manhole, one thousand, seventy-three. Vanadeter Engineering, twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven, eighty-five. Cemetery, Albright, Z F one fifty truck, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-four. These all totaled up to three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-five, twenty-nine. Comment?
Comment, Oliver Rod?
Thank you, your honor. The, the truck that was mentioned is for the cemetery, it was bought out of the